Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of the Fairmont School Board. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody have a chance to review the minutes from last time? Entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes from both those meetings, the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we have a new agenda, the green one. Any changes to that? If not...
SDCC report by Joe.
Okay. With that change, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the amended school board meeting as presented.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Celebrations, none. Superintendent's report.
Thanks, Rufus. A few things. First of all, the enrollment report. Good news tonight, we are up ten students from where we were two weeks ago. In the last two weeks, we picked up a net gain of eight students at the elementary school and two at the high school. So we are now serving one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine students. Quick look at the calendar, just to put your, have your attention on a couple of things. First of all, after tonight's board meeting, because tonight also is a township trustee...
County, or their elections.
Elections. So our school board meeting has to be over before six, and it will be. But following the school board meeting, we're going to have a curriculum committee meeting that will be held also here at City Hall. And so stick around for those of you on the curriculum committee. Looking all the way down towards the bottom, Thursday, April twentieth, there's two important things happening. One, we are going to have a policy committee meeting on April twentieth at four thirty. Also on April twentieth is also one of the dates of our strategic planning session, and I'll go over that in just a moment. And then on Friday, April twenty-one, is an important day for the, we have three faculty members as of tonight that are retiring at the end of the school year. And so we'll have the retirement tea from three thirty to five o'clock in the William Bud Room on Friday, April twenty-one. And then I did distribute for everybody's reminder that the strategic planning calendar, it's, the topic of this is called Strategic Planning Organization Meeting Wednesday, December fourteenth. These are the minutes. But I just want to call your attention to some important dates. On Thursday, April the sixth, the two consultants, if you remember Jeff Olson from St. Peter's Schools and Harold Remy from New Ulm, will be spending the entire day here in Fairmont. They will be interviewing high school students, the superintendent and administration. The, Harold Remy will be interviewing elementary staff. Jeff Olson will be interviewing secondary staff. And then later on that day, they'll be interviewing school board members, and then they'll have a community meeting that evening. And the purpose of this is basically to get a summarization of what people think about our school district and get a good feel for any issues or any concerns or any ideas they have for our school. And then following up on that, on Thursday, April twentieth, will be our first strategic planning meeting, in which we'll have a state of the district report. And the consultants will share with us the engagement summary from all the different groups they spoke with on April sixth. We'll have another meeting on May second, a third meeting on May sixteenth, and our final meeting will be June thirteenth. So this will be very important for our school district. And last evening at SDCC, I did present this timeline and asked STC members to recruit some faculty and support staff to be on this committee. We're looking for probably twenty to twenty-five individuals to serve on the strategic planning committee. It will only take about eight hours of your life, but it's a very important eight hours. And, you know, some people may want to be involved in this, and those that are, we're asking them to contact Judy Kapitsky so we can compile a list. And so this would be very good for our district to do, very good for our community. Great timing.
Do you have a timeline that day of April sixth as to, like, when they're going to be meeting with the school board or the staff? I mean, do they have that, or is it just impromptu, or, do you know?
I don't have that yet, but I will follow through on that. That's a great question. I will find out that, I would almost think that the school board maybe sometimes in the afternoon, like at four thirty or so, when we have, you know, our committee meetings would be a good time to meet, and then following that up with a committee. So let's just select four thirty at that time. And then if they can meet with individuals, maybe whether you want to meet individually, we'll talk about that.
Yeah.
Later on. We'll get somebody set up with the two consultants.
Sure. Thank you.
Thanks, Julie. That's it.
So you did indicate if people were interested in participating in this, in this process, including parents and community folks.
That's correct.
They could contact...
The district office, contact Judy.
Okay. Very good.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Financial business. Are you going to be using me?
Yes, it will be. Let me think where I'm at here. Okay, in your packet, you should have received, let's see, let's do the treasures report, and you'll see the funds as they're, the balances as they are. Nothing really to report on that. On the flip side is the expenditure report and also the transfer in wires for February twenty-third to March eighth. And the expenditure report there at the top, it's just listing what our adopted budget, where we're at, our monthly expenditures, and then our year-to-date expenditures. And total there, you can see at the bottom of that that we are fifty-seven point five six percent of our budget spent so far. And then in your packet, you should have a P-card register. There's one item on there I wanted to bring to your attention, elite restaurant equipment. Now, because it's P-card, there's no check number or anything, because it is a payment to basically a school credit card. And that is for replacement of a fridge at the high school. And that's all was on that one. There is one with single checks. I don't have anything to really to bring to your attention on that, but the reason we, we tried not to have single checks, the reason we do have is if we need to maybe make some payments before a bill is due, and we can't wait until the next check runs, so. And then you should have the register for this pay period or this run, and that's three fourteen, two thousand seventeen. And I did have a couple there. First one is check number fifty-nine, five sixty-seven, made out to Minnesota State University Mankato, and that's for a fax. It's Fax to the Max is what it's called, and it's a conference, and Wendy Tonder is attending that, and that'll be on Friday, April seventh, two thousand seventeen. And a quote from Wendy is, "It's my favorite conference. I learned so much." She goes, and she goes every year if she can, and it's just, she learns so much and what she can bring back into the classroom. And then the check underneath that, Minnesota West, check number fifty-nine, five sixty-eight, that is for our spring two thousand seventeen PSEO bill, and that includes thirty-four students who have taken advantage and earned, or have the opportunity to earn a hundred and seventy-eight credits. And then on a little farther down, Region Two A, Minnesota State High School League, check number fifty-nine, five seventy-six. And that includes repayment to the Region Two A. We hold events here in Fairmont, and then gate receipts and that are sent back to the region. And that includes a solo ensemble contest, also girls' basketball and boys' basketball gate receipts. I think that's it. Any questions?
Julie, I just want to go back to that refrigerator that we purchased for Fax. That's an industrialized refrigerator, and that money is coming out of, if you can recall, the school board set aside fifty thousand dollars for the vocational wing, and that's, that two thousand one hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-five cents is coming out of that fifty thousand dollars. And because Family and Consumer Sciences is part of the CTE program, vocational program. What we found is that we had, one of the industrialized refrigerators was not keeping things cold, and so there was some...
Well, it's important.
There was some concern about things getting spoiled. So we wanted to provide good quality products for our kids, and so we ended up with a new refrigerator.
I know I replace mine when it doesn't keep things cold, so. Any other questions that you may have for me tonight? If not, I will make a motion to approve the February two thousand seventeen treasures report, single checks, wire transfers for two twenty-three seventeen to March ninth, two thousand seventeen, and payment of the March fourteenth, two thousand seventeen bills.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of them favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. No old business, no new business. We move to personnel. And employment, Dell?
Oh, resignation.
Nicole's first.
First, we have a resignation from Vern Osborne. Evening custodian at the high school effective March seventh, two thousand seventeen. He's worked in the district since two thousand twelve. I therefore move to approve the resignation of Vern Osborne, effective March seventh, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we will move to Dell.
Enclosed in Appendix Day, you'll see a list of the coaches that Matt Mahoney is recommending the district hire for spring sports. You'll also notice there's a few positions that need filling yet, but I would move to approve the list of coaches for spring athletics for the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school year.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions?
In case anybody's wondering what the, the positions that are open, there is a junior high baseball coach, an assistant golf coach as well. So if you're interested, contact Mr. Mahoney at the high school.
Thank you. So all of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And following the resignation of Vern Osborne, Tyler Garrison is recommending that Lynn Rosa be hired as his replacement. You'll recall that we hired Lynn in December for a four-month position to help out during the busier winter months. Tyler was very pleased with Lynn's performance and believes that she will serve the position very well as an evening custodian. Lynn's current temporary position is nearly ended, and there are no plans to fill her position at this time. So hearing that, I would move that we approve the employment of Lynn Rosa as an evening custodian effective March thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at a salary step of one.
I'll second it.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any questions? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to medical leave requests. That's myself. Nancy Hebert is requesting a medical leave request effective March twenty-four, two thousand seventeen through April twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen. I therefore offer a motion to approve the medical leave request for Nancy Hebert, effective March twenty-four, two thousand seventeen through April twenty-eight, two thousand seventeen, per medical recommendation.
Second.
Motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And following the resignation, or no, here, Claire Theobald is requesting an adoption leave, effective March first, two thousand seventeen through May five, two thousand seventeen. We are currently advertising for a long-term substitute teacher for Claire's position. I therefore offer a motion to approve the adoption leave request for Claire Theobald, effective March one, two thousand seventeen through May five, two thousand seventeen.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Very good. And back to Dell with retirements.
Cindy Hewset has tendered her letter of retirement, effective June sixth, two thousand seventeen. Cindy has been employed with the district since nineteen eighty-eight, so I would make a motion to approve the retirement of Cindy Hewset, effective June sixth, two thousand seventeen, with our congratulations.
Second.
Russell? Have a motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And one more?
Oh, excuse me. Excuse me. Cheryl Kidd has tendered her letter of retirement, effective June sixth, two thousand seventeen. Cheryl has been employed with the district since nineteen ninety-seven. I would make a motion to approve the retirement of Cheryl Kidd, effective June sixth, two thousand seventeen, with our congratulations.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, moving along, we have board committee reports. We have the sixth grade student council.
Yep. On March second, Joe and I met with the sixth grade student council to greet us right at eight AM. There were fourteen very happy and excited sixth graders who had a whole list of subjects they wanted to talk to us about, and ranged everything from more food options during both breakfast and lunch. They want a salad bar line. They would like more time for lunch, so they're not rushed while they eat or play. They talked about flat balls at recess. Now, these are sixth graders, and they some tend, I think, have their recess last or close to last, and by the time they get them, the balls are flat. So they didn't just come with, "The balls are flat." They came with a suggestion and asked if we could possibly purchase a pump for them, and also suggested that we keep the balls for each grade level separate, so that if the younger grades lose the balls, they get still hot balls to play with. I was impressed that they didn't just come with concerns, they also came with possible suggestions. They talked to us about keyboarding and wanted to know why they needed to do that at an elementary level. And we talked to them about that with the new curriculum. It's often required that they produce papers, and they're supposed to keyboard them. And it's important for them to learn at a young age also, so that when they get to the junior high and senior high level, they haven't developed bad habits or bad technique that leads to disabling...
Carpal tunnel.
Carpal tunnel things in their hands and wrists. And so we talked to them about that, and also that they hope that there was a time, and actually there is, when they get through a certain point of their keyboarding where they can learn more things like coding. And that is something that will be brought to them. They talked about Wi-Fi issues. We have elementary kids concerned about Wi-Fi issues in the elementary school, and that is something that's already being addressed. This summer, I believe, we're going to have some extensive work done that will hopefully alleviate that, not only at the elementary school, but at the high school. They talked to us about, oh, some things that they really enjoy that have been implemented this year is the walk and talk in the morning when they get to school. They don't have to just stand. They can walk around the halls and talk to each other. They can also go to a bottle flipping station, as Mr. Spear talked to us about before. They, they really enjoy it, and it's a, I commend Mr. Spear for coming up with these activities for students to do to keep them active. They also talked about the early morning PE class, where kids can come early in the morning, and those that participate really enjoy it. And they also had a request, a dream, of having a sixth grade exchange program with, their initial idea was Texas, so they could experience warm weather in winter, and they could experience snow. But since that was kind of maybe a little off, they said maybe just someone in some school in the city, so that the city kids could experience small-town school, small-town school could experience city school. So they had, it was fun. They have many ideas. They're excited to learn, they're, they, it's infectious. It was, it was a fun meeting. It lasted the, until nine AM, and we actually had to go. I think they probably would have stayed and talked to us for another hour, so it was fun. I appreciate the opportunity.
Just to comment, just for the, the students that were questioning the food service, we are under, starting to do the negotiations for a new, you know, to, our desires for a new food service vendor, so maybe we'll be looking at some changes that way, so.
They, actually, we did tell them that, I think, and they asked if they could sample.
Oh.
And see, and sample the actual food that would be served. So we did talk to them about that. That's a good point. Thank you. Yeah, it was, it was enjoyable.
Will this be a recurring opportunity for students to meet with board?
I think it would be wonderful, what if it was?
Yeah.
I know we have in the past.
I know, yeah, we've done it at least twice a year.
It just always depends on the day and, you know, the opportunity when, when it's available, that the kids, students are ready to meet with us.
Maybe we could do it once a quarter with the elementary students, and maybe even meet with different kids besides just the student council. So, yeah.
Yeah, very good. And then we also met with students at the high school. Nicole and I attended high school breakfast the seventh, and I think it was a very good experience. Initially, we were...
Got some evil eyes because we were sitting at the wrong table. We'd taken someone's table in the morning.
We were invaders, and we didn't, they, a lot of people, there were, there were signs that we were school board, and, and what we realized is that most students don't really understand what the school board is, who the school board members are, what role they have in, in, in education in Fairmont. And so very slowly, students started coming to the table, and once we gathered a few students, we started to have a very good conversation and, and, and learned some interesting information. I'll share a couple of things that we heard. One of the students said that they would benefit from more opportunities for tutoring, that they felt that if they missed, you know, school with an illness for a couple of days, it was very difficult to, to catch up, and they said that, that, that they would certainly benefit from, you know, from that opportunity. One student who, who's in speech and had visited other schools during speech meets commented that she was impressed in other school districts where the students were very proactive, very, you know, very political, that they were circulating petitions for this or that, and, and she timidly asked if, if they were allowed to do that in Fairmont. And I said, and I said, "More than allowed to, we, we would encourage it." And so I think what this tells me is that there's a great opportunity for, you know, for us to learn from the students, but we can only do that through dialogue. And, and so my goal is to, is for this to have be a recurring meeting, hopefully once a month, and I think once we, once they become familiar with us, comfortable with us sitting at, maybe, we have to make sure we pick the right table, it'll be, the conversation will develop.
Rufus was a little more patient than I. I went and inserted myself at tables. And I want to thank those students who put up with me, and more than put up with me, they talked to me, and I got some great feedback from them. Everything from more electives that they would like to see, to Fastpass, what they thought about it, what they liked and didn't like, to clubs that they'd like to see. One, there were a couple of students who, the freshmen this year have their lockers in the, I will call it the gauntlet hallway, where it is so crowded you can hardly get to your locker, and if you do, you, you risk falling into it, bypassing people, just suggestions from them about how we could alleviate that congestion. The first suggestion was make the hallway bigger. Not really realistic, but they had a constructive conversation where one student came up with a great suggestion that I think we could probably implement. And I, it was, it was wonderful to talk to these students, and I really appreciate them talking to me, and hope that we get to talk again in a month, actually, less than a month now.
Any questions? Okay, Joe, a visit to Chanhasen Lakeville High School.
Actually, Ian, we just went to Chanhasen. We never made it to Lakeville, but we did, we had a group of three administrators and six teachers, high school faculty members, that went and visited Chanhasen High School, and we visited Pioneer Ridge Middle School, one of the three middle schools that they have in the Chaska, Chanhasen area. I, I was just looking through my notes here. I think I took fourteen pages of notes while we were up there, and we were most interested, they have a different type of schedule. They have a seven-period traditional schedule on Monday, Tuesdays, and Fridays. And on Tuesday, Wednesdays and Thursdays, they have ninety-minute blocks. So on Wednesday, they have periods one, three, five, and seven. On Thursdays, they have periods two, four, six, and a period eight, which really doesn't exist, but it's more of a flexible learning time. They've established their high school and their middle school in places where they really are encouraging individual students to become self-learners. And the teacher really takes a different role. One thing we learned at the high school, there are no high school teacher desks. High school teachers do not have their own classrooms. The classrooms are used all throughout the day. Teachers have places to go. Different departments have places where they can go and have meetings, and they can have their computers and have their curriculum materials available. But it was just a fantastic place to visit, and we were so impressed, I think, with the administrators and the faculty and the teachers and the facilities, that we saw. A couple of little nuggets I'll just pull out. One of the big things that students talked about, ninety-five percent of their students, by the way, go off to college, and they point out that time management is usually the biggest issue of a student going to college, because they, they're on their own. Well, they're also kind of on their own at Chanhasen, because they have so much more flexibility to move in and out of classrooms that they need assistance in. They talked about Generation Z. I never heard of Generation Z. I've heard of Generation X. I've heard of all these different generations. They talk about the Generation Z learner spends ten to fifteen minutes on a topic, and then they have to, then they just move on to something else. You know, it's just a very, very fast-moving target of people. They have, this is one of my great, this is one of my favorite quotes, and there's quotes all over this school. There's quotes in the hallways, there's quotes in the, in the different places where students can go, there's quotes in the classrooms, but this quote really caught my mind. It said, "Great minds have always encountered violent opposition from mediocre minds." I appreciate that. We visited, and I, and I see one of our faculty members and one of our administrators that's in the audience tonight, also were on that trip. I would hope that sometime in the next few weeks, many of the, all the other, eight other people that went on this trip would be able to open up more and talk about the different experience they had. We then went to Pioneer Ridge Middle School, which is a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade building. And what was unique about the Chanhasen model is that they started this, not in high school, they started this in the middle school. They started this in the early grades, and then when they, these kids went to high school, it was like, what is this, sit and get stuff? You know, we were so used to being flexible. And we met with four students, Delia, Seth, Nora, and Kevin, two young ladies and two young men. They were the most delightful sixth graders I've ever met in my entire life. Articulate, oh my goodness. They were just great, and they, they stood in front of the nine of us, and they answered questions for probably forty-five minutes, and they were just, just great, talking about the things that they do and how they learn and what's best for them. I could probably go on and on and on, but I'll stop right there. I would, one of the reasons that we did that, of course, is, you know, the high school administrative team and the leadership team at the high school, the faculty, they are looking at different possibilities of scheduling our high school differently in the future. And, and the main purpose of that is to try to make school, really to try to prepare all students to be career and college-ready. That's really the goal. And so nothing's decided yet, but we have a lot of work to do, and, but I appreciate the good work that's being done so far by, a lot of good research is being done, and so I'm sure you'll have more discussions as we move along.
How long ago was this, the new model instituted at the high school in Chanhasen?
Two years of the high school?
Early, I think.
Okay, the middle school started earlier, I think, because they've moved along.
So among the students that you visited with, had any made that transition from the old model to the new model? Do you recall? I'm just wondering what, what the overall impression was of the, from the students.
My take on that, I guess my, the students that we talked to, and again, when we were visiting, the nine of us really scattered. Every person, every student I talked to, just, they were, first of all, they were heavily engaged in their own work, or they were heavily engaged in working with three or four other students. They were working together on projects, they were working together on trying to problem-solve. They were working on whiteboards together, they were working with their computers. They do have a one-on-one project that they've instituted, but I learned that the seniors didn't get that. The seniors, they started it younger, and because some of the seniors had Chromebooks, some of the seniors had, had PCs, really nice PCs, and when I asked one student about that, she said, "Well, this is my own personal computer. I'm taking it to college next year." And many of us just went out and bought our own. But it was just, it was kind of like visiting a college.
And what about faculty? Did they have any input on what they thought of, because obviously they, they've lived through this transition for the past two, three years.
Well, a couple of the things that I picked up is that the expectation is that all faculty will have their grade books updated every Friday. Every Friday, before the teacher goes, grade books have to be updated. The second thing is... goes, grade books have to be updated. The second thing is that to make this work, all teachers have to have their curriculum online and available at least a full week in advance. Many of them, though, have planned out their whole semester, and, but a lot of pre-advanced planning for implementation, for successful implementation. And, but the fact that, the two things that really struck me is that the expectation, in fact, one of the quotes that one of the administrators said is that they don't expect all of their faculty members to be perfect, but they expect every one of them to grow every year, to get better every year, to actually show significant, not so much even significant, but to show that they've actually grown, that they've done research, that they've done some additional preparation. But again, the expectation is, I was looking for my actual quote, but that's kind of a summary of
Well, that hearkens back to Tom Friedman's book
Right.
Where he makes a statement that, you know, that the only way to survive in the future is to be a lifelong learner
Mm-hmm.
And to improve yourself every year.
And I was impressed, too. I was walking by one of the faculty offices, I guess I'd call it, and there's windows, so you can see in to these faculty offices, and there were probably eight teachers, I think, the one I looked into, and they were all working. Some were working together, some were on their computers, working individually, but it seemed like a lot of collaboration going on. So departments really were working very strong. I see some heads nodding in the audience, so they're agreeing with my observation. You saw that, too. And I think that's really, you know, teaching is hard, and if you can teach in a group and work together in terms of working together to design curriculum and to do assessments and to work on projects together, it's, it makes it better. And so I think we saw a first-class system, and a couple of things we noticed that we don't have at our school, they let their students wear hats, and, you know, my father was a World War II vet. If we walked into a building with a, that flew a flag and had a hat on, either our head got knocked off or our hat did. But, you know, we didn't, you didn't walk into a public building that flew a flag with a hat on, and the students could have their book bags. But again, the high school is relatively new, and it's, the hallways are big, and the lockers are much wider, and it's just a very, very well-designed building. I'll also add, both the middle school and the high school, the importance of light. You know, there's windows and glass all over. There's hardly any place you can go that you don't have direct sunlight, and that's different at our high school, which our high school has, was it one classroom that has two little windows?
One.
Oh, one classroom has one window, that's it. Rex Hurnus used to have that. I don't know who has that now.
Art has some, don't they?
It's our in-person coaches.
Oh, oh, yeah, Art has those outside windows, too, the vocational way. Okay, that's the other one. But that was really interesting, too. It's a, you know, I would encourage anybody that, you know, and we were, there was another school that was scheduled to show up that day, but they didn't show up for some reason, but they do a lot of tours, and they really encourage people to come and talk to us. And they also, the last thing I'll mention is that they do have, you know, the students have student IDs that have barcodes on them, and if they want to, during these flex days that they have, or during the flex hours that they have, if they're walking down the hallway, if they decide to go to a different part of the building, they simply go up and they read their barcode, and it comes up and says Julie Lawrie. It identifies who you are, and basically it says, "Where do you want to go?" And you have maybe twenty, twenty-five different choices of where you want to go, and you click on one of those, and if it's full, it will tell you it's full. But if it's open, then they expect you to get there within the next few minutes. And what's neat about this software system they have is, as a student, it actually tracks the amount of time that you're in class, the amount of time that you're in these different study places. And so it kind of gives you a way to, it takes a snapshot of every student's time management. That's kind of interesting, too. The software, by the way, is available, my understanding. Our tech people, we took Will McAdams with us also, and he was one of our tech people who met with their tech program, and they will, if we do implement a program like that in the future, then they would, we would send people up there to be trained on this software. It costs five thousand dollars to be trained, and then they give you a free copy of it, and it's a one-time cost. But that was a pretty clever way to keep track of people as they're moving all throughout the building. Anyway, pretty impressive. I was, I think everybody left there just with a big smile on their face. We went out and had lunch together at a place that had curling. It was a curling club.
Yep. So can you curl? Can you curl? Can anybody curl, or just?
Wanted to.
Oh, fun.
Yeah. Yeah, there was another corporation, looked like they brought in like forty or fifty of their employees. They all had the same logos on, and they were teaching them how to curl, so you could watch them through the window. But we were sitting right by the glass, and that was interesting. You don't see that every day, but in Minnesota you do, I guess, and it was fun to watch that curling. You throw a stone.
And use a broom or whatever, and then
With a broom, oh, yeah. And you have two different shoes. You have a suction shoe and a skating shoe. We learned all that. I tell you, Todd Seegar became, Todd Seegar knows all the rules of curling. Todd was one of the science teachers. Ann Holm went with us, Sarah Goodall went with us, Jeff Nauman.
Holly.
Oh, yeah, Holly Christian, technology went, and then, of course, Will McAdams, Andy Tredo, Mrs. Niss, and myself. And they were very gracious. They were just, I hope that someday we can return the favor.
Okay, more to come.
Yep.
S D C C? Will that be you, Joe?
Yeah, you know, S D C C, I was there just briefly yesterday. Kim, did you last a little longer than I did?
I did, I did.
Do you want to step up and talk a little bit about it? Because what I did, I spent just about five or seven minutes talking to the S D C C members about the importance of our strategic planning process that the school board has authorized, and provided them the dates and asked for volunteers. But Mrs. Niss stayed longer.
I did, yeah. Yep, and I dug out my notes here from the agenda yesterday. You know, the meeting was actually pretty short as well, because many of us were going to the boys' game last night, so we did get through the agenda pretty quickly. I would say, you know, we did all the regular reports. The biggest, I know they had discussion regarding the decreasing instructional coach from three to two, just with, you know, decrease in possible funding and stuff, so they did have that discussion, and that group would be in favor of doing that if need be. So they did discuss that. The other thing, Jody took us through an activity where we each teacher, or she had a, I don't know, maybe ten things that we had to rate on a scale of one to five. So for example, how are we implementing learning targets and success criteria? So again, we rated it on a scale of one to five, and then they separated the administration's responses to the teacher responses, and then we looked at those results at the end, and we noticed that we were fairly similar on all of them except two, where we had more of a discrepancy between administration and teachers, but we were able to identify our two lowest ones, and the success, or learning intentions and success criteria was one of our lowest ones, again, the implementation of that within the classrooms, and then also how our students report on their progress. And that actually ties into learning intentions and success criteria. So we kind of looked at that and really thought we should probably focus on those two areas in terms of professional development, or take a look at those as a district overall from instructional coaches to administration. I would, and then we also, we did revisit the educational improvement plan that we always created the summer retreat, and we just wanted to take a look again at what are our goals, what were the steps to accomplish those goals, and are we doing the things that we said we were going to do? So we really kind of revisited that and, you know, found that we are, you know, I don't know, Joe was kind of there at one point when we did say we felt like we were starting to get our boat rowing in the same direction, so some of that data was showing that that was happening. So, so, yeah, so it was a pretty quick meeting, but those were probably the big topics overall. So.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we got through the agenda.
I move to adjourn the school board meeting at five thirty-nine.
Second.
And a second. All is in favor?
Aye.
Reading and adjourn.
Excellent.